Hello, I'm Pastor Dave and this is our first online portion of our Daniel Bible study for this year during Lent. Now, as I said, this weekend, we're trying something new to see if this form of Bible study would actually work, to be able to do different things and do it on your own schedule. Now, this week, we're going to have a little bit of an introduction into the book of Daniel, and then we're also going to look at chapters one and two. Now, Daniel is one of those interesting books. Much of the Old Testament will focus us in on the Babylonian exile. And Daniel takes place during that exile. But the scholarship's a little more confused on this because the scholarship dates Daniel by its language to roughly 165 B.C. Now, this would be around the time that Anadotius Epidides desecrated the temple in Jerusalem. The places in the grand scope of history, this is when the Greeks under Alexander the Great conquered Judea. What's also interesting is we don't have record of this book of Daniel until that second century. Now, one of the things we have to consider with this is that it may have been an oral story that was passed down and was finally recorded at that time. But there's a lot happening in Daniel, and this does fit to what someone who is being persecuted would want to hear. Specifically, if we look into the Apocrypha into First and Second Maccabees, the people that that, those books describe really would play into Daniel. But the events that are described in Daniel range from 605 to 539 B.C. So, this could have just been stories that were passed down for several centuries, and maybe that will play into some of the reasons why things are the way they are in the book. But overall, this is one of those sticky points of scholarship and faith and where we draw our lines. But along with this, we'll see that Daniel is almost like two separate books. And for the most part, what we see in Sunday School when we're growing up, that's all in the beginning of Daniel, chapters one through six. By the time you get to chapters seven through 12, that gets more into prophecies about the end times and the apocalypse. But this is, there's that saying, as we're going to experience in these weeks, that Daniel is arguably the most unusual book of the Hebrew Bible. If that was a scholar who wrote, who said those words, this is an interesting book and it's worth really delving into. But as we look into Daniel, we need to place this in the correct history. This does come in, Daniel one especially, comes after the fall of Jerusalem. And this comes to the time of the reign of King Jehielakim, or Jehielakim. And that's really what we're going to see in 2 Kings, chapter 24, and 2 Chronicles, 36. Those are the passages that describe this. And we also see other passages from the prophet Jeremiah, because he'll describe the fall of Jerusalem. He'll give some prophecy towards the fall of Jerusalem and the 70 years of exile. And also, the prophet Ezekiel plays into this as well. But overall, we can see that Jerusalem has fallen, and people are taken into exile. And if you look at different passages, we get a sense of what's happening. From 2 Kings, we see that Jehielakim was kept in Jerusalem to rule as a vassal of the Babylonians. In Jeremiah, chapter 52, verse 28, we are told that 3,023 nobles were exiled to Jerusalem. And that eight years later, another 832 were sent into exile. And we get that from 2 Kings, 24, Jeremiah, chapter 52, and actually Ezekiel, chapter one. And the idea of taking nobles and putting them to exile was something that happened a good bit in the ancient world. Part of the purpose was, you take the best and brightest of the civilization you have just conquered, and you bring them back to put into your service. It's kind of like integrating your defeat of society into the victorious ones. And part of this was done to kind of maintain the status quo and to start putting down the rebellions before they could start. Because if the best and brightest are already in your service, they're not going out for long walks with their friends and starting something. And this is where we get into Daniel and his friends. Now, we have the names we know and we don't know, and we heard some of this on Sunday. Because we have Daniel with Hananiah, Michael, and Azariah. Those are the actual names. And these names all have meaning. Daniel in Hebrew means, "God is my judge." Hananiah, whom Jehovah favors. Michael, who is what God is. And Azariah, Yahweh has helped. These names all have that meaning, and they all show faithfulness to God. But in, as you read in chapter one, they all are given new names. Daniel becomes Belshazzar, which actually means "Bel's prince." Bel is the patron god of Babylon, almost their version of Dol. And actually, language-wise, very close, it's basically reference to the same god. Hananiah becomes our well-known Shadrach. And Shadrach means inspired by the sun god Aku. So, basically gone from whom Jehovah favors to inspired by the sun god. Michael becomes Meshach, who can be compared to Shac. Shac being basically Babylon's version of the Roman goddess Venus, the goddess of love. And then Azariah becomes Abednego, which means servant of the singing fire. Now, the fire god of Babylon was called Nebbo, and that's kind of where it comes into play. When we look at this, we can say that this is kind of meaningless, but think about the value of names. This is something that we tend to belie, but looking at it from other cultures, this is a big deal. There's an African scholar, I want to get his name right, named Takumbo Adi Imo, who wrote a commentary in the book of Daniel, The African Bible Commentary. And he points out that typically, when a new nation has come in, that names will change. In the colonial era, you had Europeans come in and they started giving European names. And the people lost their tribal identity and took on this new one. And this still happens in Africa when a Christian territory is conquered by Muslims. They will change names. And if you don't believe me, most of you are old enough to remember the song, but Constantinople is now called Istanbul. The name has been changed to reflect who is in charge. And when we look at this with Daniel and his friends, by taking away their Hebrew names that honor God and giving them Babylonian names, first, they're saying, "We as Babylon have defeated you and your people." But also, by taking away their names that honor God and changing them to names that honor Babylonian gods, they're stating, "Our gods are more powerful than your gods." And that's kind of a bit of why I try not to use the names, we know Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego so much better than Hananiah, Michael, and Azariah. For whatever reason, we do that, except with Daniel. But I try to keep the Hebrew names for that very reason, that those names matter. But when we get into the heart of chapter one, we get into the food. And we did most of this on Sunday. If you haven't watched the sermon, go back, watch the sermon. But food is important to the Jewish people because it goes back into the Torah on what food is clean and unclean. And really, if you want to get into what is kosher, what is not kosher, it's easy enough just to go back into the Old Testament and find it. You can start with Leviticus 11 and Leviticus 17. You get much of the kosher laws in that book, as well as a good chunk of Deuteronomy, chapter 14. All those make sense because those are our law, those are law books. That's where we get much of this. But it doesn't end there. Because if you look on the side, we've got some epistles. Romans 12, 1 and 2, 2 Corinthians 6, 14 to 18, 1 John 2, verses 15 to 17, and 1 Corinthians, chapter 8. They all deal with food. And the core problem here in Daniel one is that they were not going to defile themselves by violating these laws that they knew, and they were going to instead honor God. Now, keep in mind, that came after their names were changed to honor new gods. Basically, they're putting their foot down on what's happening. And this really goes deeper into God's plans. Because it's not so much about checking certain boxes in the law, but it gets down into checking one's heart. God is seeing that in the midst of all that's happening, in the midst of being forced to change, they are still going to stay loyal to God by following God's rules. And this is also interesting because of what this does. This goes back into something I found in Jerome's commentaries on Daniel one. But basically, they were taken into captivity because of the sins of their ancestors. And they, so this situation is not theirs. But by staying loyal themselves, they are getting an immediate reward for their virtue. Because at the heart of this, they're at the king's table, they could defile themselves, eating whatever they want, and instead, they seek out to serve God, but they also do it in a way that doesn't harm others. The king's servant, who was likely a eunuch who was placed in charge of this situation, they didn't just throw it back into his face as a sign of rebellion, they went to him and said, "We can't eat this, we need to honor our God, can we do this instead?" And they work with him to basically treat him with respect, even though he doesn't believe as they believe. And that's one of the important parts of this whole Daniel situation with the diet. This isn't like the Daniel planned diet that Rick Warren, Daniel Amen, and Mark Hyman put together, where you cut out animal protein for three weeks. This is a fast that is meant to honor God, and also honor God in their actions beyond just following the rules. They're not, basically, they're not just doing a short 10-day fast for the sake of doing a fast. They're seeking to honor God throughout their life by doing what God would want them to do. And that's a challenge. But honestly, it's one of those things that's a challenge for us to do because the temptations, like for them, are always there. And if we want to take this into that second-century B.C. context, this is sitting, looking at the people, seeing what happened to their temple, seeing it defiled by foreigners, who also were defeated by the Persians. That there's a reason Persia is a good, the good people in this book. But by seeking to honor God, they're saying, "Don't follow the ways of the Greeks. Stay with God." Because in the end, God will give us a strength, God will give us wisdom, God will get us through. And that's a lesson we can take through to today, but this isn't the sermon. But what we're going to see in this book as we move forward, because once we get to the end of Daniel, their faithfulness to God is rewarded, they're given wisdom, literature, and literature, and Daniel's given the gift of interpreting dreams because he's faithful. But from this point on, we see their service, first to King Nebuchadnezzar, but then as continuing through the rulers of Babylon until King Cyrus of Persia defeats the Babylonians, and then their continued service with the Persian people. And this fits exactly with how we can look at the Greeks in the second century. But by the time you finish with chapter one, and we start looking at chapter two, what we're starting to see is the work of Daniel and his friends and what they did. And we see this because this is when King Nebuchadnezzar has his dream. And if we look throughout the Old Testament, both in the Torah and throughout the work of the prophets, one of the ways God communicates with people is through dreams. This is something I myself would affirm, that God communicates to us through many ways. I mean, try to think of all the ways God can communicate to you. Reading a scripture, through another person, through dreams, through the nudge, the silence. If we work together, we could talk about some of these experiences that we have had where God has sent us a message. But here in chapter two, verses 1 through 16, we are, we're getting that happening. King Nebuchadnezzar has a dream, it troubles him, he knows it's a message. King Nebuchadnezzar's not dumb. And this is important to remember. King Nebuchadnezzar, when he sacked Jerusalem, he took the sacred items from the temple, brought them to Babylon, and instead of defaming them or defiling them by using them or melting them down into coins, he placed them in a Babylonian temple because he was not going to cross God, and this comes up later in Daniel. So, in this dream, he knows something's happening, he knows some divine being, to his understanding, is trying to communicate with him. So, he does what we would hope leaders would do. He reaches out to his advisors, his wise men, and in this case, depending on the text you're looking at, magicians, enchanters, sorcerers, none of the Chaldeans, and he goes, "Tell me what this means. What does my dream mean?" Now, the, one of the first things he does, and I find this absolutely hilarious, is in verse four, "O king, live forever. Tell your servants the dream, and we will show the interpretation." Okay, this says all we need to know about these men and who's working through them. Now, if we look at who's, by, we look at the understanding of who these are, we're looking at basically astrologers, shoetars, fortune tellers, exorcists, wonder workers. These were people that would claim knowledge of sacred books and enchantments and predict, they would make predictions and no incantations. Basically, all this supposed wisdom that people still rely on today to try to understand something, but one thing that they don't know is God. We still have the same situation arising. But basically, this is, historically speaking, off. Because the timelines kind of get meshed together and doesn't mean that there's any lack of truth to it. But second year of King Nebuchadnezzar's reign, when all this happens, he gets his dream, calls these people in, and he says, "Tell me what this is." Second year of his reign was before the fall of Jerusalem. So, maybe this passage extends, maybe it over a long period of time, maybe it's just over the years, details got muddled, if it was passed orally for centuries. But they have these people that supposedly know what's going on, and he says, "Tell me what it is." They say, "Tell us your dream." Now, at this point, we have his dream. Well, actually, this is the one we don't have the dream. He's not... Basically, part of this is, he's testing. Like I said, he's not, King Nebuchadnezzar's not dumb, he's following God, or at least respectful of a God working in his life. He doesn't tell them what his dream is. He basically is saying, "Shouldn't you already know?" Kind of like one of those things, I remember especially in the 90s and early 2000s, when you had the paid ads for Miss Cleo and the other people, other fortune tellers. And you kind of go, "Wouldn't they know I was already calling, if they could read the future?" He's picking up on this, because these are the people who would live in the palace, eat his food, enjoy the bounty of being close to the king. And he's saying, "You should already know the dream, tell me what it is." Nicely calling them out. And then ultimately, they get to Daniel. But this is important when we think of who these advisors are. Because when we look at these advisors, the king's seeing that they might be full of it and telling him what they think he wants to hear. But I got to ask, don't we have people like that today? One of these things, I find this amazing, the older I get, is how much perception has changed. Because I remember at one point, people worrying when Oprah Winfrey retired, because, "Oh, she impacted so many people's lives, helped people through things, gave such great advice, and now doesn't have the most sterling reputation," or "A greater fall from grace." Ellen, who was seen as, when it turned out who she really was and that part of her came out, she's basically not nearly as famous or popular as she once was. And this is one of those things, we can look online, we can look, see who we see in the news, how quickly they fall from grace. And it's one of those things that sometimes we have to be cautious about who we're getting our information from and whose advice we are seeking. And the first part of Daniel two, that's where they're at. But then, they call for Daniel, Daniel comes. And he's basically, he hears the challenge. And we, starting at verse 17, you get his response. And he does kind of what we should do. 17 through 19, you hear that he goes and he gathers Hananiah, Michael, Azariah, tells them what's going on, what the situation is, and then they go and pray. They pray, basically, they pray, they get, and Daniel gets the answer. God reveals the dream and the interpretation. And that has a valuable lesson for us. Most of us aren't in a position to give wise counsel. But sometimes we can be pushed in situations to immediately say or do something. Daniel and Hananiah, Michael, and Azariah make the first step, coming together and praying about the situation first. That's not new, is it? We know that's what we should do, the catches to actually do it. And then, it's also what happens when Daniel gets the answer. Because the first reaction is not to run back to the king. His first reaction is to bless God. "Blessed be the name of God forever and ever, for wisdom and might are his." Give thanks to God and point out who's really doing the work. It goes back to Daniel one, that diet, honoring God first. It's going back to their core names. Honoring God first. And this is one of those things we should bring into our own lives. And then, he does the amazing thing, starting really into verse 24 and onward. We get his first reaction, like we hear what was actually happening to the king, what the dream was and everything else. And oh, this is always fun when we get into this. But first thing is, he says, "Don't kill the other wise men." "Bring me before the king, I will show the interpretation." And then, he honors the king. And then he goes, "Well, King Belshazzar, what is it?" And he describes what we have as the statue. Had to take a break there to draw my masterpiece to explain where we're at in chapter two. And now you see why I'm a pastor and not an artist. Should just make it a little bit better. So, part of Nebuchadnezzar's dream involved the statue, where we have his, the different pieces put in there. This starts really in verse 31, "Before a great stone comes." And really, as you see in 39:1, we're seeing the passage of empires. "No empire lasts forever, no kingdom on earth lasts forever. One will come, one will rise and take the place of the one before it." And really, that's the basic. But it's, there's some imagery with this that we have to get into, and part of this does fit with what I said earlier about that second-century B.C. concern. If those are the people hearing this, this makes sense. Now, you get to up in the head, the gold head, that's the Neo-Babylonian empire, King Nebuchadnezzar. And basically, God trusts him with authority. But as we go down, the next is silver, which is a lesser valuable material. This would be like the Midian kingdom, which would come afterwards. Although, at this time, there was no Midian kingdom. Or that's median, oops. So, this is kind of getting into the prophecy, but it is a dream, and the dream was meant to be prophetic. Next, you get further down, you get the brass. Brass, bronze combination there, and that would be the Persians, who ultimately, where we catch up in history. Next down, you get the iron, that's the Greeks. What's interesting next is the iron and clay mix. This certainly attributed to Alexander the Great's empire, the Macedonians. And partially because of how unstable iron and clay mixed would be. It's not as strong as clay alone would be, it's not as strong as iron would be. It is unstable. But also, there is some, also the fact that when Alexander died, he broke up his empire. And one would be the Ptolemies, which may represent clay, who ruled in Egypt, and the Seleucids being iron. There's also a potential that the commentary on iron and clay was meant as a, basically, a commentary on intermarriage, which at the time of Alexander the Great, the Jews were not a fan of marrying anyone who wasn't Jewish, and that actually goes back further. But the last part is the stone, which is God's kingdom. Now, in fairness, this is far from the only, this is far from the only interpretation. Others still hold that gold is Babylon, silver, but silver would be Persia, the brass-bronze would be the Greeks, iron would be the Romans, and then what's next? And this gets into what is always a difficulty with prophecy. And it's not a bad thing. This is the thing I love about dealing with prophetic messages. And that is the fact that for King Nebuchadnezzar with the original dream, he's being told, "God is giving you sovereignty, you are the head, you are the most valuable. For one day, you will die, and another will take your place." And, okay, that makes sense. For the Jews who were suffering under the Macedonians, to see the progression of empires, it's good to know that they will not last, and that in the end, God's kingdom still reigns. And guess what? It's the same for us. I mean, we could plug in more modern empires. You can plug in the British Empire, the French Empire, the Soviet Union, the United States, China, India, you can put any of them in. And we'll see that in the end, it's still the kingdom of God will win, the stone will still come. And that's kind of an apocalyptic message we already have in this, is in the end, doesn't kingdoms come and go, God still reigns. And really, the benefit of this is what happens at the end of chapter two. Now, King Nebuchadnezzar, hearing the, hearing his dream told back to him, given the interpretation of what's coming back, bow down, like falls on his face, worships Daniel and says, and basically gives him wealth, gives him power, gives him privilege. And this kind of, and then Daniel appoints his friends over different provinces. This kind of wraps up what we already saw in chapter one. You have the four young men who are forced into Babylonian service, but stay true to their God. And in the end, even the ruler realizes the power of God. That's where we're going to leave it for this evening. Now, in your packets, or also if you clicked the link and downloaded it, hopefully already started, but you still have time to go through and read that, these two chapters, reflect on the questions, and try to get a deeper understanding. One of the things I'm still going to work to figure out is how we can respond to questions that you have. Right now, just reach out to me, and maybe I'll compile them and put them in a list and give an answer. That might be where we go with this. Um, like I said, this is a, if you have a better idea, let me know. We're still experimenting with this, to try to find a new way of doing small groups and Bible study. But that's it for this week. Next week, we get into chapters three and four, sermons already prepared for Sunday, and we'll get into what is happening in three and four. But have a good evening.